Aloha and good morning. My name is David Tarnas. I am the Chair of the House Water and Land Committee. Today we have a hearing for the purposes of considering numerous measures. Today is February 10th. It is 8:30 a.m. We're here in the Capitol in Conference Room 430, and we're also having this by video conference. Welcome to all the testifiers. Thank you very much for your participation. We always do a much better job when we have testimony. So thank you very much for participating in this democratic process. Today, our first measure, well, let me just say a few things for our testifiers. If you could keep your testimony to two minutes or so, that would be great. I'll ask you to summarize if you go on. Because this is a morning hearing, we really need to adjourn by noon. Usually it's not an issue, but if we get close and we have to cut testifying time a little bit, please note that all of your written testimony has been received by all committee members so that we can review that in our decision making. Testifiers, please keep yourself muted and your video off while you await, and then when I ask, call you for testimony, please go ahead and unmute yourself, turn on your video, and provide your testimony, and when you're finished, please turn your video off and mute yourself. If you have a technical issue and you need to contact our technical staff, just use the chat function for that purpose only. If you're disconnected, please rejoin. If you're disconnected in the middle of testimony, I'll try to accommodate you to continue your testimony when you rejoin. If for some reason there's a network failure and we have to reschedule, we'll put out proper public notice so you'll know when we're going to meet again, if we need to do that. And please conduct yourself with our finest tradition of aloha for each other, and we'll all be just fine. Okay, let's go ahead and start with House Bill 2199 relating to fish ponds. First, we have written comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. I'll refer you members to that. Next, we have testimony from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Mr. Brian Nielsen. Please proceed.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, and members of the committee. Brian Nielsen, Administrator for Division of Aquatic Resources, representing the department on this measure. We stand on our written testimony and support and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kevin Chang from Kua'aaina Ulu'au'amo. Please proceed, sir. You have to unmute yourself.
Aloha chairs and committee members. Kevin Chang for Kua'aaina Ulu'au'amo, we stand strongly in support for this measure and stand on that. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Next, we have written testimony and support from Beth Anderson, and also written testimony and support from Makano'i Kufana. And we have testimony and support from Kimiona Kane. Is Kimiona Kane with us today?
Aloha Nui Chair, yes I am.
Please proceed.
Mahalo. I apologize Chair, I got on a little late. Which which number are we speaking about?
The first bill, House Bill 2199 relating to fish ponds.
Perfect. Mahalo Nui Chair, thank you guys, committee, for the opportunity this morning. I'm Kimiona Kane of Waime'ano. I'm a kumu'uha'u mu'u pohaku of rockweaver and builder of fish ponds in the native Hawaiian culture. I stand in support strongly of this particular measure as it helps to ensure that our communities and our keke and our future have continued fish stock that can go into the ponds that we're restoring today. I am also in pure support of the idea that, you know, giving our keke the opportunity to learn these things in the classroom and outside of the classroom is helpful to the productivity that we're going to see for our future generations. And so strongly support this. Mahalo for taking it up and giving us an opportunity to move our people forward. Kalau Nui.
Mahalo, Mr. Kane. Thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we have received on this measure. Do you have, any of you have questions for our testifiers? Representative Morikawa.
Thank you Chair. For Brian, do you folks have a hatrie in one location, or do you do it in various areas?
Yeah, we we only have one hatrie currently located at the Nui Nui Fisheries Research Center on Oahu on Sand Island. But but I will clarify, we don't currently have fingerling production at that facility. Right now, we raise trout, as you know, for the reservoir on Koi.
So are you able to do different, like saltwater, freshwater, brackish water?
Yeah, we we do have facilities. We have tanks. We have a saltwater well. We have freshwater. So so we do have the space and facilities, but it would take some work to bring in the technical expertise to be able to, you know, put a project like this together. So, you know, we would be working with other, you know, experts, aquaculture experts and partners to try to put the project together. So it'd be a multi-partnership effort.
Okay, and that's why you want the funds to go to the departments instead of the program itself, right?
Yes, because because we probably would be looking at contracting out experts to hold workshops along with, you know, the fish pond community that to really build capacity for fingerling production.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Thank you for the trout and keke.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Other questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Next measure, House Bill 2200 relating to biosecurity. For this, we have testimony and support from the Department of Transportation, Mr. Patrick McCain. Please proceed, sir.
Chair Tarnas, members of the House Committee on Water and Land, thank you for the opportunity to testify. The Department of Transportation is in support of the measure, and we would like to stand on our written testimony. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. Next, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Agriculture.
Aloha and good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Phyllis Shimobukuro, Gaisa Chairperson. We stand on our written testimony and support and offering comments.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Next, we have testimony and support from the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Good morning Chair, committee members. I'm Marigold Zoll, Acting Administrator of the Division of Forestry and Wildlife and representing DLNR. We stand on our written testimony, and I have staff here to assist me in answering any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from the Department of Health.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony and support of this measure.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony and support from the Big Island Invasive Species Committee, Springer Kay. Next, we have testimony and support from Kristi Martin with the University of Hawaii Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. Kristi Martin, please proceed.
Mahalo Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kristi Martin with the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. We stand in strong support of this measure, and I just wanted to clarify for members of the committee. There's there's a number of lines of defense for invasive species. Honestly, the first line of defense is with our agencies, Department of Health, Department of Agriculture. This program that is run as a pilot program for the past, you know, four and a half, five years now, has been what I would consider maybe the second line of defense, and that is they're trying to catch the things that the inspectors themselves aren't necessarily paying super close attention to, or the things that may fly out of the containers or the aircraft themselves. So these are the traps and things like that around the ports that can possibly catch those things that are already beginning to evade detection. So it's a super important measure. It's something that is not currently being done on a on a basis within the U.S. Department of Agriculture or the Department of Agriculture structure. We've been able to support Department of Health in trying to get some of the monitoring for mosquitoes back up and running across the state. But but this program, again, would be to continue that program for the next five years on a number of priority species, like a variety of mosquito species, Africanized honeybees, and other harmful pests, and also include Honolulu Harbor, certain key areas in Honolulu Harbor that that we really should monitor. So mahalo.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Next, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, Nicole Galase. Members, please refer to her written testimony. Next, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Please proceed, Mr. Miyamoto.
Good morning Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We'll stand on our written testimony and support of this measure and support of protecting our farmers, ranchers, and ecosystems from invasive species that consistently make it through. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. And we have written testimony and support from Douglas Perrine, Nathan Dubay, Jay Ashman, and we have testimony and support from Mr. Kimiona Kane. Mr. Kane, please proceed.
Thank you so much Chair for this opportunity, Vice Chair, committee members. Kimiona Kane, again, just a community member out in Waime'ano, strongly in support of this measure as somebody who has been engaged with the efforts to eradicate invasive species here on a community level. Certainly want to support these efforts that continue to help recreate the thriving ecosystems that Hawaii was known for. We have a challenge in many parts of our islands, and so anything that can be done to invest into the perpetuation of our native ecosystem species and ourselves as people would be greatly supported by myself. So mahalo Chair for the opportunity.
Mahalo, Mr. Kane. Thank you for your good work. Members, that's all the testimony we have received on this measure. Do you have any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you to all of our testifiers. Next, we have House Bill 2332 relating to easements. First up, we have testimony and support from the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Chair Case? Or Mr. Moore? Or yes, please proceed, Mr. Moore.
Okay, good morning Chair, Vice Chair, committee members, Kevin Moore, DLNR Land Division. The department will stand on its written testimony and support of this measure, and we're available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the Department of Planning and Permitting, City and County of Honolulu. Mario, please proceed.
Good morning Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair, committee members, representing the Department of Planning and Permitting. My name is Mario Su Lee. I, our testimony, we stand on our testimony in opposition to the bill in its present form, only because it will also affect county lands, and the subdivision process and surveys are necessary to determine if there are potential conflicts on utilities and city facilities with other people requesting easements. So we have suggested language that, you know, allow the option to agencies or counties to individually determine whether they want to opt out of the exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Su Lee. Next, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, the Hawaii Farm Bureau, the Hawaii Aquaculture and Aquaponics Association, and from two individuals, Thorne Abbott and Jay Ashman. I know that Mr. Miyamoto is here. Mr. Miyamoto, did you want to provide any oral testimony, or just stand on your written testimony?
Thank you Chair. We just supported, we just clicked on the support testimony. Do apologize. We do support this this measure, if it'll help facilitate the transfer of the non-egg park lands. Also, that's the specificity of our testimony is in relation to the findings of Act 90 Working Group and the transfer of the non-egg park lands over to Department of Agriculture.
Thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we have received on this measure. Are there any questions for our testifiers? Representative Kobayashi.
For DLNR, are the amendments suggested by City Department of Planning and Permitting acceptable to you?
I haven't seen them in writing, and I probably would need to, you know, reserve an answer to that until I can see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There being no further questions, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have House Bill 2041 relating to the Land Conservation Fund. First up, we have testimony and support from the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Mr. Penn, please proceed.
Thank you Chair Tarnas. Yeah, Ms. Zoll will take it.
Oh, yes, Marigold Zoll, please proceed. You're muted. You're still muted. Now you're okay.
Thank you. Good morning Chair, members of the committee. We apologize for the erroneous references to the Senate Companion Bill 2351 in our testimony, but other than that, we stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii, Anthony Ching. Written testimony and support from the YNI Community Redevelopment Corporation, also known as MAU. Testimony, written testimony and support from the Ma'alaya Village Association, from the Ke'ao Halei, from Hiipaka, from Ke'ao Halei, livable Hawaii Kaihui. Testimony, written testimony with comments from the Trust for Public Land. Written testimony and support from the Mount Honolulu Fish Pond Heritage Center. Written testimony with comments from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, Mr. Tom Yamachika. Please proceed.
Thank you Chair Tarnas, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We urge caution, members, when expanding a special fund, we we caution that this is not the way to 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 budget. I wanted to quote from the Conference Committee that had reported on the measure that had originally put a cap on this particular fund. They said, "Your Committee on Conference finds that budgetary planning transparency are key components to ensuring the fiscal health of the state. Your Committee on Conference believes that by establishing maximum amounts to be distributed to various non-general funds from the conveyance tax, this measure will make forecasts of general fund revenues more reliable, will increase legislative oversight of agencies and programs supported by the non-general funds, and will subject those agencies and programs to competition for limited public funds if the agencies or programs want more than the amount automatically distributed to their non-general funds." This this bill illustrates a phenomenon which we call special fund scope creep. So you start off with a special fund with a cap of, let's say, $1 million, and next next time you make it $5 million, and you let it do more things. Then you make it $10 million and let it do more things. And then it's like you don't have a limit at all. We urge the committee to urge to to exercise caution on this on this bill so that you can protect the integrity of the appropriations process. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yamachika. Next, members, we have written testimony opposition from the Hawaii Realtors, Ken Hiraki, and written testimony and support from a number of individuals, including Gabriel Sham, Michelle Galimba, Denise Antolini, and Thorne Abbott. Members, that's all the testimony we have received on this measure. Do you have any questions for our testifiers? Do you have any questions for our testifiers? Representative Kobayashi.
For Dillinor, how much is this fund generating per year?
Thank you for that question, Representative Kobayashi. The fund runs almost exclusively on the appropriations that come from the legislature through our share of the dispositions from the conveyance tax. We do participate in the state investment fund and collect interest on those revenues and are the total cash balance of the fund. And then we also recently have begun to receive about $25,000 in revenue from dispositions of interest in land that was acquired with revenue from the Land Conservation Fund. So for example, one of these is with a solar farm that's located on the Maual organic farms property in YNI. And because of the disposition provisions in our statute for revenue sharing, we are able to get a percentage of the revenues from the solar farm license that the YNI Community Redevelopment Corporation receives for a 20-year period, which will add up to about $400,000 over the lifespan of that project.
Do you know how much is being generated by the conveyance tax yearly?
Yes, I do. Those reports are available through the Department of Taxation, and I have worked with Dr. Seth Colby over there at the Council on Revenues. For example, if you look at the conveyance tax revenue statewide as of December 2021, the state had already collected over $111 million in conveyance tax revenue. So under the original formula that the legislature created for us, that would be over $11 million in revenue for our fund. Right now, we're only receiving 5.1, which is less than we received in 2015. And our understanding of the 5.1 million revenue cap, which was a decrease from 6.8 that was established in 2015, is that that was a temporary COVID-related measure that we would hopefully be able to fix up at a later date, such as these proposals that you have before you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Penn. Thank you, Representative Kobayashi. Any other questions, members? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you very much to our testifiers. Next, we have House Bill 2276 relating to invasive species. First up, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. We have also next the testimony from with comments from DLNR. Ms. Marygold Zoll, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. Marygold Zoll with the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our written testimony, and I have staff to support if we have questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony and support from Hawaiian Electric and from two individuals, Doug Perrine and Kimiona Kane. That's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Members, any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have House Bill 1929 relating to land use. First up, we have testimony and support from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Ms. Mary Alice Evans, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development strongly supports House Bill 1929, which requires OPSD to perform a study to refine the rural district policies and make recommendations to facilitate reclassification of marginal and fragmented lands in the ag district to the rural district. And we'll provide you with a number of options so that you'll have a choice of how to proceed if you choose to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. Next, we have testimony and support from the Department of Agriculture. Ms. Shemabukuru Geiser, please proceed.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony and support, and we look forward to assisting the Office of Planning.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Mr. Miyamoto, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, members of committee. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support.
Thank you very much. Members, we have testimony, written testimony in opposition from Mr. Gerard Silva and written testimony and support from Mr. James McCulley. That's all the testimony we have received on this measure. Members, any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have House Bill 1930 relating to fish aggregation devices. First up, we have written comments from Department of Budget and Finance. And then we have testimony and support from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Mr. Brian Nielsen. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our written testimony in support and also want to note that Dr. Kim Holland is on the Zoom, who is the project lead for this project that can also help assist answering any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've received written testimony and support from the Hawaii Fishermen's Alliance for Conservation and Tradition, Mr. Phil Fernandez. We have testimony with comments from Dr. Kim Holland. Dr. Holland, please proceed. Did you have any comments you want to provide at this time?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. No, I don't have any comments at this time. But if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holland. Next, we have received written testimony and support from a number of individuals, including Doug Perrine, Darrell Tanaka, Randy Cates, Sean Roback, and Clayton Kubo. Members, that's all the testimony we have received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Representative Maori Kawa, please proceed.
Thank you. I'm not sure who can answer my question, but I think it was last year. I saw a couple buoys came in because of the storm surge and whatnot. What happens when people report these buoys on shore?
If I may, I can answer that. We have a network of collaborators on the various islands and our own resources on Oahu. And our protocol is to retrieve those buoys as quickly as possible, and then they get recycled and reused in the program.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, other questions? I do have one for Dr. Holland. I've been hearing from fishermen that there might be utility in modifying the design of these fish aggregation devices. Since you're our expert here, is that something that perhaps is a recommendation that has merit?
Thank you for the question, Chair. To be candid, the current design has worked very well, by and large, for several decades. But in response to suggestions from interested parties, the next two buoys that we will deploy around Oahu will in fact have strengthened mooring gear, beefed up mooring gear compared to what we've been using for the last several decades. But of course, as in many things in life, there's always a compromise. So we have to keep the load on the float more or less the same as it's always been. So we're going to heavier chain under the buoy and heavier swivels. But because they're heavier, they'll have to be shorter. And that may make the gear more vulnerable to the fishing gear that are used around the fat. So again, there are always trade-offs. But yes, we have taken the advice of some of our interested collaborators. And the next buoys that go in the water around Oahu will be of a slightly different design with heavier gear underneath them.
Thank you very much. Appreciate hearing about that. And I appreciate your work to continually improve our fish aggregation devices.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks very much to our testifiers, Dr. Holland. Thanks for being here today. Next, we have on our agenda House Bill 1988 relating to coral. First up, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Mr. Nielsen, please proceed.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our written testimony, appreciating the intent of this measure and providing some comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from the Attorney General, and I think we have Melissa Goldman with us today. Ms. Goldman, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Melissa Goldman testifying on behalf of the AG's office. We submitted written testimony with comments, including a few suggested amendments to the current draft, which are aimed at reducing the vulnerability of the measure to constitutional legal challenges if it's eventually adopted. And I am available for your questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from Inga Gibson with the Organization for the Fishes. Ms. Gibson, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. Thank you for the opportunity. We absolutely appreciate the intent of this measure. But I think the AG's testimony really said it best that as drafted, it doesn't seem to express a local interest. Right now, it's unclear whether or not it would prohibit the continued harvesting of local black coral. Back in 2016, we did work on a relatively similar measure prohibiting the sale of ivory, rhino horn, and other parts and products of 17 different species. The committee may want to look at HRS 183D, which did not was not subject to the same concerns that the AG noted regarding constitutionality issues. Further, the committee may want to, you know, clarify the prohibition on the possession with intent to sell. And so and also define coral as both live coral, raw coral, not just dead coral. And I just wanted to point out, again, back to the AG's testimony regarding the local interest. As this committee knows well, you know, there are continued mass harvesting of our marine life for aquarium purposes. So it's a little interesting that we would focus our efforts on prohibiting the sale of coral, not from Hawaii, but still allowing the local harvest. And then, of course, the harvesting of our local marine life. So again, appreciate the intent and hope that this measure can be amended so that it is not subject to the constitutional issues. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from Lisa Bishop, Friends of Honoma Bay. And then we have testimony in opposition from Christopher Dean with Clean the Pacific. Mr. Dean here today. Yes, please proceed.
Hi, thank you. I really can't believe I'm in opposition to this bill because I really stand behind the intent of this bill. And I really hope that it can be amended and revised to include the protection of Hawaii. I see that this bill is similar to the kind of legislation we have to protect the world from invasive species leaving Hawaii and contaminating the rest of the world. But for species coming into Hawaii, we don't have any X-ray or any kind of means to protect Hawaii, you know. And in this, this seems very similar in that, you know, while I agree that we need to like, you know, think globally and prohibit the sale of corals and the trade of corals and stuff like that, we also need to like protect our local reef systems, which includes the harvesting of reef fish for the aquarium trade and and the whole entity of our. I hope that you guys will rework this legislation and resubmit it, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we've received testimony in opposition from Maui Divers of Hawaii, Mr. Cole Slater. Please refer to his written testimony for your review. And we've received testimony in writing and support from Doug Perrine and Kimiona Kane, written testimony in opposition from Darrell Tanaka and Randy Cates and Clayton Kubo. And we also have testimony in opposition from Mr. Ian Chun. I refer you to his written testimony. Members, that is all the testimony we've received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Vice Chair.
For the Attorney General, please. Thank you very much for your comments. I had a question. How would banning the sale of coral jewelry in the state cause an undue burden on interstate commerce when we already ban the import or export of stony coral for other uses?
Thank you for the question. Vice Chair, essentially, it is possible for a state or local government to enact a law that does place a burden on interstate commerce. The issue is that when that occurs, there's a balancing test that takes place. The incidental burden on interstate commerce versus the legitimate local benefits from the public measure. Here, as our testimony points out, there aren't really local benefits being articulated for this measure. And for that reason, we don't feel that it would. We feel that it's vulnerable to a challenge on those commerce clause grounds.
If we took in the suggestions to add in the language to show the local impact, would it reach that 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 test?
Probably, Vice Chair. It would depend somewhat on the specific language involved. But it is generally a fairly easy standard to reach.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Vice Chair. I was just notified that Mr. Cole Slater with Maui Divers of Hawaii has just joined us. Mr. Slater, you're welcome to provide oral testimony at this time. Please proceed.
Good morning. Yeah, thank you for for having us join today. The the key component that we were hoping to understand a bit more of. Sorry, we just got the link late here, so just.
We hear you, so please proceed. You're just fine.
Okay, great. We're wondering the the kind of the basis of this bill here. This is. If the driver is to stop global impacts on the reefs, is the Hawaii economy really that large of a of an overall driver? And we think the answer is is no there. The coral businesses in Hawaii is relatively small. We'd love to see the the import laws taken more seriously so that coral is not illegally imported. But Hawaii, you know, we're quite proud of our history as Maui divers, as well as as the state of Hawaii. We've been the model sustainable industry on coral harvesting for for, you know, for just the inception of the industry for 60 years. People all over the world have looked at how Hawaii has selectively harvested corals. And as a result, they've changed a lot of their harvesting practices to to be more in line with what we do. So could we have some more information as to why we're trying to stop just the sale of non-reef forming coral products?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. I appreciate your questions. I will now go back again to my committee and let them know now we've received all of the testimony on this bill and heard the testimony, including from Mr. Slater. Any questions of our testifiers? Any further questions of our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you to all the testifiers who testified on this measure. And and Mr. Slater, you can certainly correspond with the introducer of the bill after the hearing to get more details on background. And and if you, we will make a decision on this measure at the end of this hearing. And there will be some more discussion about it at that time. Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, House Bill 2254 relating to native Hawaiian sailing canoes. First, we have testimony and support from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. Mr. Ed Underwood, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, committee members. Ed Underwood, Administrator with the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. The department stands on its testimony in support of this measure. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in writing from Hawaii County Office of Mayor in Support. Testimony in writing from Richard Kirsten, Sea Paradise Scuba. Testimony and support from Puhidans. Testimony in opposition from Clifford Niaole, Kui Ova. Testimony in opposition from Clifford Niaole, Hui Ova'a Kaulua. Testimony in opposition from Bonnie Kahapea Tanner. Is Bonnie Tanner available?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning. Good morning. Members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bonnie Kahapea Tanner, and I'm the Executive Director of Kanu Huna Moko Voyaging Academy. We're a small nonprofit. Our mission is to perpetuate the knowledge of traditional Hawaiian navigation and to provide opportunities to students to advance in contemporary ocean-based careers through academic, college, and career support. We are in strong opposition to this bill. We have a twenty-nine-foot double-hulled sailing canoe with a nine-point-nine horsepower engine. This bill, as presented, will completely eliminate our ability to use our state harbors for temporary or permanent mooring, thus limiting our ability to serve the community and provide opportunities to our students to learn valuable life skills and Hawaiian culture. We're one of only a handful of organizations operating Hawaiian sailing canoe programs. And my question is, why were our organizations not approached about this proposed amendment? And why is this being proposed? And who does this benefit? Why is the language limiting the definition of Hawaiian canoes being changed to Hawaiian sailing canoes of more than sixty feet? So we have a lot of questions about this, and it appears that this is targeting a certain group of people, and it's not looking at a statewide issue. And of course, you know, the state government is required to support the perpetuation of Hawaiian culture. And we see this as a direct limitation against Hawaiian sailing canoe programs, which are, again, trying to promote and also work with youth and build up our community. So we have a lot of questions about this. So as it stands now, we're in direct opposition. And we had a very robust conversation going on last night via some email and text threads. So I know there's many more than just me today who is in opposition. So we'd like to come to the table and offer our, you know, expertise and things that we can do to figure out why this is even being proposed and how we can move forward. So thank you very much. Mahalo.
Mahalo for your manao. Next, we have Nakaleva'a Chad Paishan, but I see Pomai Bertleman. Pomai, would you like to provide testimony? You could unmute. Pomai? Maybe we can come back to her. Pomai Bertleman, are you able to provide testimony at this time for Nakaleva'a?
Figure out why this is even being proposed and how we can move forward. So thank you very much.
Mahalo for your manao. Next, we have Nakaleva'a Chad Paishan, but I see Pomai Bertleman. Pomai?
Kiala'anoi, Chairman Tarnas, aloha noai, and thank you for our name.
Yes, please proceed. You're fine.
Thank you for allowing me the ability to be able to provide testimony this morning. Like, I am in direct opposition. Yes. Yes. Aloha.
You're okay. Please proceed.
Aloha. Aloha noai, Chairman Tarnas, aloha noai, and thank you for our name. Aloha noai, Chairman Tarnas.
Please proceed. You're fine.
Thank you for allowing me the ability to be able to provide testimony this morning.
Need to turn off your YouTube.
Pomai, please turn off your YouTube.
Yes. Yes. Kalamai.
Okay, now please proceed.
Yeah. Really quickly, my name is Pomai Bertleman. I'm the Board President of Nakaleva'a Moko Ke'ave and a member of Ohana Vaa. This morning, I strongly oppose the language of this House bill. And we'd like to offer this manao to all of you. Hava'ha moko hama'ha va'a, the canoe is the island, the island is the canoe, is a way by which we are able to work together and accomplish much because we all see the same vision. The utterance of these words have become the ceiling resonance and grounding learned over many years of Hawaiian canoe sailing and double-hulled voyaging canoe programs throughout Hawaii and the Pacific. Today, hava'ha moko hama'ha va'a is the vision and motivation of Nakaleva'a Moko Ke'ave, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization based out of Waimea, Hawaii. Nakaleva'a is dedicated to advancing Hawaii's cultural values and intelligences through teaching and application of non-estrual navigation and open ocean voyaging. Our work is grounded in the foundations of the fifty-four-foot double-hulled sailing canoe Makali, whose life force weaves the blending of knowing and interdependence that is shared between ocean and Iona. I come here again today representing myself, Nakaleva'a Makali Ohana. We're in strong opposition of Bill 2254 in its current reading, current state. In its current form, the language of this bill would adversely impact Hawaii's canoe culture and our abilities to operate and function within its mobile harbors. The initial statute upon which this bill seeks to amend was drafted with the intent of honoring and perpetuating the traditions and values of all of Akaulua, our training practices, and the educational foundation that these canoes support. I come to all of you with much aloha and say thank you for hearing and understanding our concerns in regards to its current form. Kiala'anoi, aloha.
Mahalo, Pomai. Good to see you. Thank you for your good work.
Mahalo, Dave.
Next, we have testimony in opposition from Amy Panayali'i Gilliam with Hui Ova'a Kaulua. Please refer to her written testimony in opposition. Next, we have written testimony in opposition from Rebecca Inaba, Laopua 2020, Patrick Kahavai Ola'a with Keokaha Community Association. Testimony in opposition from two individuals with Hui Ova'a Kaulua, Ha'ana'akala Tanaka, Timothy Gilliam, and also testimony in opposition from Aleko Lorenzo. And testimony in opposition from Leilani Jazlin with Ohana Vaa. We have testimony, written testimony in support from Alinda Dance and Bill Murtagh. And written testimony in opposition from Clifford Lebed and Brandy Cutler. Written testimony in opposition from Junior Rex Lokeni. Opposition from Kalani Kahalaiomi, Holly Crane, Ha'nanikanae, Ian Bishop. We have testimony in opposition from Filamer Batangan. Is Filamer Batangan here? Filamer, are you here?
Yes.
Yes, please proceed.
Mahalo noai, my name is actually Filamer Focitas. I'm a member of Ohana Vaa, testifying against HB 2254. Va'a Kaulua have been around longer than you and I. Depending on where you are in Polynesia, they're called vaka, va'a. And they all represent the rich history and culture of native Hawaiians and the strength and knowledge of Polynesia. Indigenous culture and enriching our community should not have to be accommodated. It should be made a priority. To limit these voyaging organizations' ability to continue and share practice, this ancestral knowledge by limiting the amount of va'a kaulua in a harbor and the amount of time they have in the harbor is also limiting the ability of these organizations to maintain and sustain this practice. Further, the limitation of the accommodation of these va'a to only these are not... To only those that are non-motorized and longer than sixty feet effectively eliminates the accommodation of most va'a kaulua in Hawaii. I also want to touch on how interesting it is that native Hawaiian sailing canoes are defined as such in HB 2254. This limits access for smaller va'a and organizations who are doing similar amazing work around the islands. And I also deeply applaud the required annual report that is rudely being asked for organizations in order to prove their value to our community. Mahalo and salamat for your time.
Mahalo. Next, we have written testimony in opposition from Carolyn Daly, Blossom Lincoln Ma'alu'a, Kai Mana Barkarse, Maui Tao Taha. We also have testimony in opposition from Kai HoShijo. I refer you to Kai HoShijo's written testimony in opposition. And finally, we have two individuals opposing in their written testimony, Eva Malia Lee and Nanea Lo. I also would like to circle back to DLNR and offer Chair Case the opportunity to testify. Chair Case, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas. This is not a DLNR bill, but we have enough background to think that maybe a fix here is to clarify that you're talking about sailing canoes that charge. In other words, that say, offer tours and the like. I think that might... I don't... I think this is certainly not aimed at all of these folks who have very passionately explained what they do with educational and recreational and, you know, tour groups that foster Hawaiian culture. I think it may be aimed at the people who charge for rides in a sailing canoe. So that might be a fix, just for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Case. Okay, members, that's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next, we have House Bill 1931 relating to mosquito control. First up, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. And we have testimony in support from DLNR. Mary Gold Zoll, please proceed.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. The department supports this bill provided that its passage does not replace or adversely impact priorities indicated by the executive supplemental budget. And I have staff to support if there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from the Department of Health.
Good morning Chair, Grace Simmons from Vector Control Branch. We stand in full support of this measure and ask that you consider the amendments we placed in our testimony.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Kristy Martin with the University of Hawaii Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. Kristy Martin, please proceed.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kristy Martin with Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. As a former educator, I'm going to share with you folks that have not been deep in the weeds on the mosquito issue. Mosquitoes first arrived with sailing, sorry, with whaling vessels. And they brought with them and over time have been able to spread diseases, not just to people, but there's diseases that they spread to birds. And the birds, the native birds of Hawaii are very susceptible to these diseases, avian malaria and avian pox. Therefore, when you look out your window, you don't see native birds, even if you might have native forest. You don't see native birds because the mosquitoes are continuing to cycle those diseases from things like zebra doves, all of our common non-native birds, to those native, sorry, or non-native birds to those native birds. So the mosquitoes are limiting the available habitat of our native birds. The native birds are now restricted to high elevation forests where it's really difficult for those mosquitoes to succeed and continue to spread those diseases. So it's in the forest. And the Department of Land Natural Resources is charged with taking care of those forest areas. So yes, we definitely support this measure that would add a mosquito planner position. It's hugely important work, and we just appreciate you hearing this bill. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have written testimony in support from numerous individuals and organizations. Anthony Ching with the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii, Taya Penniman with American Bird Conservancy, Doug Perrine, Sam Gon, James Friday, Keith Evans, Jessica Middleton, Jessica Wayau, Brett Mossman, Kimiuna Kanae, Kellen Apuna, Meredith Miller, Sharon Pollack, Shaya Hanarvar, Dylan Ramos, and Lorraine Wayanuhea. Members, that's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much to our testifiers. Next, we have House Bill 1979 relating to habitat conservation plans. First up, we have the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Ms. Mary Gold Zoll, please proceed.
Good morning Chair. The department stands on its testimony in support of the measure and offers comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony in support from Linda Elliott, Molly Bakke, and Jeanetta Peters. Members, that's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much to our testifiers. Next, we have House Bill 1838 relating to a coastal zone program. First up, we have testimony with comments from Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Ms. Mary Ellis Evans, please proceed.
Good morning Chair and members. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development offers comments with concerns on this measure. We are concerned that it could be duplicative of our existing coastal zone management program. We're concerned that establishing a sixteen-member advisory committee requires significant staff support that we don't have. We are concerned that curriculum development and training programs would duplicate processes that the university and other schools have for accreditation that reach out to employers to determine their needs. And if the committee's intent is to move this measure forward, we would recommend an amendment to the section on permitting systems that would allow us to do a analysis and assessment rather than to be required with an advisory committee to deliver a online permitting system. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. Next, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Mr. Michael Kane. Please proceed.
Good morning Chair, committee members. The department recognizes the need for a higher-level focus on coastal zone management and the need for greater coordination. Our concern, as contained in our written testimony, is the bill proposes a complex framework that we feel needs to be developed in consultation with the affected agencies. We recognize the need. We're not convinced this is the solution or that it would be an effective tool to better manage our resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we receive written testimony in support from two individuals, Thorne Abbott and Kimiuna Kanae. Members, that's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on to the last measure on our agenda. Last measure on our agenda is House Bill 1631 relating to water conservation. First up, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Taxation. Please proceed.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members. Josh Michael's Department of Taxation. The department will stand on its testimony, appreciating the intent and offering comments, and I am available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we've received written comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. And we've received comments and support from DLNR Commission on Water Resource Management, Mr. Cleo Manuel. Please proceed.
Aloha Chair, Cleo Manuel, and committee members, Cleo Manuel W with the Water Commission. Thanks for the time. The department stands on its written comments and support and offers comments, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have testimony in support from the University of Hawaii, Melanie Landers. Please proceed.
Hello, Chair Tarnas and committee members. The Hawaii Secret College Program stands on our testimony with our written support and comments, and I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, Mr. Tom Yamachika. Oh, Jade McMillan, please proceed.
Hi, good morning committee. Jade McMillan, on behalf of Tax Foundation of Hawaii, we will stand on our written testimony, offering comments on the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, we have written testimony in support from Makanoi Ufana. Members, that's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none? I think that wraps up our testimonies today before this committee on all of these measures. And I would like to move directly into decision-making. And I would like to move directly into decision-making. Thank you, members, for being here for decision-making. Let me move forward with that. Back to the top of the agenda, House Bill 2199. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, incorporate the comments from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, blank out the appropriation amount, put that into the committee report, and defect the date to July 1, 2050. And for those where people who are hearing that technique for the first time, it's not like we want to delay the implementation of it, but merely it's a defective effective date to assure that this bill will come back to us for final review before it receives its final approval in the legislature. That way, we make sure that everything is properly articulated, and so we're putting in a defective effective date to ensure that. And you'll find that I do that regularly. So, again, my proposal for HB 2199 would be a House Draft 1, incorporate DLNR amendments, defect the effective date, and blank out the appropriation amount, put it in the committee report. Members, any discussion? All set? Let's take a vote. Vice Chair, HB 2199 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 2199 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ganaden is excused. Representative Kobiyashi.
Aye.
Representative Kong is excused. Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Ono.
Aye.
Representative McDermott is excused. The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, moving on, House Bill 2200. I'd like to pass out a House Draft 1, defect the effective date, July 1, 2050, blank out the appropriation amount, put it in the committee report. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 2200 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 2200 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Ganaden, Kong, and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, on House Bill 2332 relating to easements, I'd like to adopt the recommended language from the city and county of Honolulu. Defect the effective date to July 1, 2050, and pass out that bill with those amendments. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 2332 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 2332 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Ganaden, Kong, and McDermott for this measure and all future measures. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 2041 relating to the Land Conservation Fund. I propose to pass out a House Draft 1 merely by changing the effective date to July 1, 2050, and leave the questions related to financial matters on this to the next committee, which is the House Committee on Finance. So, my proposal is to pass out HB 2041 with a defective effective date. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 2041 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 2041 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 2276 relating to invasive species. I'd like to pass out a House Draft 1. I want to make sure that I adopt some technical amendments that have been recommended, which is basically to add the word invasive before the word trees so that we make sure that the other trees that are removed are invasives. But that could very well just be considered a technical amendment, but that's what I'm proposing. And then I want to change the effective date to July 1, 2050 to encourage further discussion. Any discussion, members? On my recommendation. If not, Vice Chair for the vote, House Bill 2276 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 2276 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 1929 relating to land use. This is an important measure to move forward. I'd like to do that by making some amendments, blanking out the appropriation amount, putting it into the committee report, and changing the effective date to July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1929 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 1929 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 1930 relating to fish aggregation devices. I'd like to move this along. It's a very important measure supporting our fishing community. I want to propose amendments for this to produce an HD1. We will blank out the appropriation amount, put it in the committee report, defect the effective date to July 1, 2050, move it on to House Finance. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1930 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 1930 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 1988 relating to coral. I'm going to turn to my Vice Chair, who is the introducer of the bill for his recommendation.
Vice Chair, thank you. The recommendation is concerning the Attorney General's comments on line 3 and line 8 in the first paragraph to add the state's coral reefs, and then on line 8 to add in Hawaii and other parts of the world. So, it reads, so it fulfills that obligation. On page 2, subsection B, we're going to add in a new paragraph F saying state permitted harvesting, semicolon, and we're also going to add in, under subsection B, a number 2 that says coral products expressly authorized by federal law or federal permit. This is the recommended language from the Attorney General's office. And then from under that, excuse me, under that subsection as well, per recommendation from DLNR, we will be adding in the federal definition of coral. Moving to the last page, under section 3, we'll be defecting the effective date to July 1, 2050. Thank you.
Members, we're proposing to pass out HD1 with those amendments. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote on HB 1988 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 1988 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 2254 relating to native Hawaiian sailing canoes. I've discussed this with the introducer of the bill. She meant no disrespect for the very important community of native Hawaiian voyaging canoes, sailing canoes, motorized or not. It's a very important part of our heritage, and she certainly meant no disrespect by introducing this bill. It was merely to address an issue that has come up in other small boat harbors. This bill is not ready yet to move forward, so with her concurrence, I am deferring this measure and encouraging the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation, to work with the introducer and the sailing community, the native Hawaiian sailing canoe community, to figure out a path forward that could resolve the conflicts this had sought to solve, but doesn't. So, I leave it back to you. We're deferring the bill, and perhaps we can address this issue in the future. Thank you to all the testifiers who provided testimony on this measure. Any discussion on my recommendation, members, to defer? Seeing none, let's go on to the next measure. House Bill 1931 relating to mosquito control. Members, my recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, blank out the appropriation amount, put that in the committee report. I'd like to adopt the Department of Health amendments to this. I think that those are useful. And then change the effective date to July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote on HB 1931 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass out House Bill Number 1931 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have House Bill 1979 relating to habitat conservation plans. To continue discussion on this measure, I would like to propose moving this forward with a House Draft 1 by merely changing the effective date to July 1, 2050 to encourage further discussion. Any discussion, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1979 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 1979 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 1838 relating to a coastal zone program. I acknowledge this proposal had a lot of thought put into it and good intentions, but I do not believe that it is appropriate for us to move it forward. And I appreciate the suggestions from agencies saying that let's continue discussions on this to figure out how best to implement some of these suggestions, which may actually be just providing additional general fund support to our coastal zone management program instead of relying so much on federal funding for that program. So, that's a bigger issue, not addressed in this bill, but one that the legislature should certainly consider. So, my recommendation is to defer House Bill 1838. Any discussion, members? Seeing none, let's move on to the last measure on our agenda. House Bill 1631 relating to water conservation. I'd like to move this forward with a House Draft 1 and adopt the recommendations from the Department of Taxation to clarify that these are for systems that are installed and placed in service during the taxable year and to ensure that there is a limit of one tax credit for qualifying taxpayer and that this would be changed to a non-refundable tax credit. Change the effective date to July 1, 2050. Members, that's my recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, 1631 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill Number 1631 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our testifiers today at our hearing. Appreciate all your input. It helps us do our job even better. With that, we have no more measures before us today. This meeting is adjourned.